Good evening. Welcome you all here tonight. I'd like to go ahead and call to order our Culpeper County Board of Supervisors' public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year '24 budget and the proposed tax rates thereafter. We have an agenda before us. Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Or entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and turn this over to our county administrator, John Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board, and good evening to those who came out tonight. We appreciate your being here. I'm going to, as we do annually, give a little presentation of the FY '24 budget that has been developed by staff and proposed to the board for fiscal year '24. And then we will hold a public hearing on that. And then there will be a second public hearing on the tax rates. I will go ahead and mention, though, that it's obviously all intertwined, and the tax rates will be part of this first presentation, so you're certainly welcome to speak on both, even during the first hearing. Kim, it's the other document if you could. So I'm going to try to be fairly brief tonight, but I want to paint a picture for those that came out and those that might be watching on television. So some of the things I'll cover will just be the key points, very, very few details, but details about some of the major areas, a little bit of a look back on where we've been, and what the next steps are in adoption of the budget and the tax rates. As far as the total budget proposed for FY '24, it stands at $231.2 million as compared to the current year budget of $211.5 million. That's an increase of $19.7 million, which is significant. But I would note that the capital improvements plan over the prior year is $7.4 million more than last year, so some of that increases in capital improvements, which we pay for from the general fund. They aren't a function of our tax rates. There is five and a half million new dollars in state revenue, but some of that's offset by a decrease in federal revenue. And the local increase is about $9.5 million. As far as our local spending, as I said, $231 million. That can be broken down by school operations at $120 million, school CIP and debt at $12 million, our county government at $55 million, county CIP and debt $18 million, the Human Services Department is $15 million, and then there's $12 million in some other special revenue and enterprise funds. So that's where you get to that $231 total. This was a reassessment year. We do that every two years. The overall average increase in property values during this reassessment was 27.47%. That increases the value of a penny of real estate tax to $819,000 and change. And the table, which is a little bit difficult to read, but in the far right-hand column, you can see that that 27.47% average increase, the biggest hit is on residential properties at a little over 29%. Commercial and agricultural was about 22% as far as the overall increase. As far as our projected county fund balance, we do have an adopted financial policy that states that the county must maintain between 10% and 15% of its operational budget in its general fund. The FY '24 budget has an operational budget after CIP items of $209 million. And historically, we have stayed above that 15% mark in our policy. With this budget, based on our audited fund balance from June 30th of '22, we will land at the end of this budget at about 14.4%. So still on the high end of our policy for projected fund balance. In terms of the tax rates, we're proposing no changes to the personal property taxes. That includes the $3 rate that was implemented last year for vehicles. Most of our personal property is $3.50, but the vehicles were set at $3.00 last year by the board in order to offset some of the increasing vehicle value. And while that is now rapidly correcting itself and vehicle values are declining, the board has elected to keep that at $3.00 for at least one more year, which, under current state code, it'll sunset after one more year in any case. As far as real estate, based on that reassessment that I just talked about, the equalization rate, or the equivalent of no increase in taxes, would be 44 cents. The current budget that I have proposed is set at 46 cents, so two cents above the equalization rate, but well below the current 55 cent rate. And there are some alternatives to that that the board has discussed, so I'll just mention that when the board advertises for this public hearing, and specifically the next public hearing on tax rates, it can advertise a rate that it then cannot exceed when it adopts the budget. It can lower that rate, but cannot increase it. So that 46 cents potentially could be lowered to 45 cents should the board desire. And we have some sources of projected revenue that could make up for that decrease, which would be potentially our meals tax. And also, we're drawing a lot more interest on our funds than we used to draw the treasures, doing a good job with investment interest, and we're way ahead of schedule on that for this year, so that's another source. I discussed some of what's on this slide already. Basically, that 46 cents that's currently in the budget is based on seven cents, that would be the fire and rescue levy, and 39 cents that would be the general fund tax. That fire and rescue levy, just for clarity, is the amount of tax it requires to pay for the operational costs of our EMS career staff and also our volunteer organizations' operational This is a snapshot of the personal property taxes, which again are unchanged from the current year, so I won't dwell on those. In terms of a few of the budget details, regarding our county government operations, the notable increases are found in salary, health insurance, new positions, and outside jail services. Our salary treatment in the county for this year's proposed budget is based on a two-year rolling average for cost of living, which is set at 6.75%. So we thank the board for thus far including that healthy increase in our salaries and think that'll help us toward our goal of catching up with the market, which we have also created a paying classification study to further look at where we stand. But that cost of living will go a long way towards addressing pay and hopefully keeping a very good staff in place. There's also the potential, under our personnel management plan, for an additional increase based on pay for performance, and that is based on the valuation of employee performance throughout the year. In terms of the new positions I mentioned, there's an assistant county attorney built into budget, a Commonwealth's Attorney clerical position. The sheriff's office has three school resource officer positions, as well as one part-time school resource officer position built into this budget, which will allow each and every school to have a full-time resource officer in the school at all times, whereas right now there is some sharing going on when we have a campus setting like Pearl Sample and AG, or Floyd T. Benz in Sycamore Park, or CMS and CHS. There's a little bit of sharing going on at those schools, so this would alleviate that problem. Environmental Services has an administrative position, Planning has a GIS position, H R has a part-time admin, and the Drug Court position is listed there, but it is being funded by opioid settlement funds that came from that situation. Schools-wise, I won't dwell on this too much. The schools have an increase coming to them from the state of about $4 million over last year, which offsets a lot of the new costs that they have for salaries and health insurance and positions and other things. They are seeking an increase in their budget, though, which does require a contribution from the county. The increase is at 3.8%, which is, I think, fairly reasonable, and would bring their proposed budget to about $34.8 million. In terms of human services, that budget has an increase of a little over half a million dollars, 50% of which is picked up by the state, and the other half of which is a local cost. And that will allow them to implement the raises that the state has included in its budget, which is 5% increases in salary for the human services folks. And a lot of times people ask these questions, so I'll just mention really quickly that while human services oversees a lot of programs, it should be noted that Full Circle Thrift, Cosmetology Center, daycare, Families First, Head Start, and Early Head Start are all programs that don't require local county funding. In terms of our capital improvements plan, I mentioned early on that that's a fairly substantial increase over last year's CIP. The total CIP is about $22.1 million, 16.5 of which we take directly from our general fund. So in other words, we pay as we go on these CIP projects. Obviously, if we build a new school or something that's many millions of dollars, we borrow, and that goes to debt service, but the large majority of all the capital improvements we make, we pay for out-of-pocket. About $5.6 million of that $22 million total comes from other sources as well. And the big-ticket items, without reading all these to you, would be the swimming pool project at about $5 million, and that's entirely funded by the town of Culpeper. The public safety includes a $5 million placeholder for the potential renovation of a facility down at Coffeywood for our local jail. So that's very much up in the air, but a placeholder that will ensure we'll be ready if we can control that facility. And then public safety, as always, includes money for the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. In this case, as it has been for the last couple of years, there's $1 million there for the Fire and Rescue Association. $800,000 of that is divvied up at $100,000 per company, and $200,000 of that is set aside for future significant projects. For example, the Little Fork Fire Department that was recently redone, rebuilt, was based on some of those set-aside funds, so that's a good thing for us to continue to build on. And then in roads, we have $5 million that we can get matched by VDOT through revenue sharing. So those are kind of the biggest items in the CIP. Debt service-wise, there's not a lot of change. We have school debt that goes back to the CCHS renovation and the Eastern View High School and the new CTE School. It totals about $6.5 million. Our county debt is carried over from the Giles Miller Building, or some of you knew it as the Wachovia Building, where the treasurer and commissioner and registrar and H R are now located. That was about $1.3 million. And then also, that $1.3 million covers Sheriff's Office Building and the Department of Human Services Building that was formerly VDOT. And then we have a small amount of airport debt for the hangars there. As far as our debt service outlook, we're hovering around that total of $8 million a year. If we didn't borrow any more money, we'd pay that all off by 2039. That won't happen. We will have projects to borrow money for, but that $8 million is projected to shrink year over year from here on out. Little bit of past budget history on that slide, and I'm not going to go through that, but for those of you who are interested, this presentation and actually the entire budget are available on Board Docs for review, and certainly invite you to take a look at that, or I'm happy to email and provide a copy of this presentation to anybody who wants to see that. But it breaks down the budget operations and how it's grown for about the last six to seven years. As far as past real estate taxes, if you look in the right-hand column under the word "adopted," basically, the board has kept taxes flat for many, many years, either not changing the rate or equalizing it. Way back in FY '12, there was an actual reduction of tax by a penny, and then there was a big increase the next year that was primarily based on the renovation of CCHS. There was a small increase in FY '20, and the current proposed budget would be an increase of two cents now, with the board having the alternative of making that one cent should it desire. Just a regional comparison, I'd point you to the third column. If you look at the proposed real estate tax rate for FY '24, Culpeper at 46 cents. The next closest county in our planning district is Rappahannock at 63 cents. From there, you can see 74, 78, and 90. So our 46 cent rate is extremely low for our region, and fairly similar for the proposed car tax, a couple more columns over. We're at $3. Madison's also at $3. After that, it's $3.45, $3.59, $3.75. And I always compare us with these five counties because we are the five counties in the regional planning district. As far as next steps, we have two public hearings tonight. The law requires that we have two separate hearings. The first one, as soon as I stop talking here momentarily, is regarding this budget. And then at 7:30, or sometime after 7:30, depending on the length of this hearing, we'll open a second hearing that speaks directly to the tax rates. And my last slide, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is just to give a really big thank you to Valerie Lamb and her staff. She's a tremendous finance director that makes this job much, much easier for all of us every year. And thank you to all of you who sit through the many work sessions and provide the input that leads to this ultimate recommendation. Also appreciate the county department heads and the constitutional officers and the help they give us in developing their individual budgets and being cooperative as we work through those to make something that works. Thank you to Dr. Bradz and the school board, to Lisa Peacock and the Human Services Board, and most of all, to the citizens of Culpeper County that pay the bills and make things work. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, John. Good overview. With that, I'll open it up to comments or questions for John before we open the public hearing, if there are any. Okay. Well, it's like John said, we're here tonight to have a public hearing, and the first one is on the overall budget, where we invite you to come and speak if you want to. And I'll go ahead and open that public hearing now. For anyone that would like to come and speak, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you to come up.
Just wanted to say thank you for all you do for the volunteers. We're not asking for cost of living adjustments or any kind of pay increases. But there's going to come a point in time where we will need some additional CIP or brick and mortar, so we'll be... We're working on some planning, some estimates, kind of a long-range plan of what we will need in the near term. So it's good to see that we're physically fit. And with everything that's coming to Culpeper, we expect the revenues to increase, so hopefully there'll be some extra monies there that we can move towards the fire and EMS side, both career and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Francis Updike from Cedar Mountain. I had not planned on being here this time, but a couple of things on a national basis has really grabbed my attention to the urgency of getting something done with the entrance out of Pearl Sample and the IQ Richardson School. Am I not working? Okay, I want to start over. I want to do that, too. But...
Budget is what you're here for. Basically, I think you guys have done a good job. Anybody that's an IQ beyond the turnip could always nitpick a budget and find some problem with it. But I think collectively, y'all have done a pretty good job, and I can take no real qualms with it, so keep on going. But my concern, as I said, is for get something done. I understand that there was a mock situation last week at the middle school, middle school, and I don't know any details of that yet, because there's a different variety and various things that they're looking for that you wouldn't expect at elementary school. Just the entrance and ingress egress is a big thing I hear. I pick up two grandchildren every afternoon, and I think some people, soon as they finish lunch, will get in line. And it's a long hassle, it's a wait, and I'm very concerned about if there is an emergency of any kind. But it really came back to haunt me and everybody else, and should, what happened in Nashville. There are crazy people in this world, and you're not going to stop them. All we can do is minimize. If we could save one child's life, one faculty member, one support person, then we owe it to them. Especially, this situation has existed for way before y'all started, Brad was in the one, when those schools were built. And it's always, it's been never a problem, so a lot of times you don't react until it is a problem. But society has changed so much, we can't take that risk. I think it'd be in a horrible situation if we don't move. And thanks very much to Paul and to Sam, who's not here. They've been wonderful in talking about this, what we need to do, see what I could do in the background and help out, and push buttons, talk to people, do whatever we need to do. And I think our biggest situation, and I understand that, and the school board itself has something like $915,000 to get started on some engineering or the process of getting this going, and I'd love to see that activated, get this going physically here July 1. Because you stop and think about it, even you say, okay, we get it going July 1, you're probably talking two years to get it completed. And that's if all things and government say-so's yes or no, to get this completed. And we're still at a high risk. We don't have the luxury of time. It's just not feasible, especially if we have the funding. And you're the guys that are going to be able to pull the trigger and say, let's go. Pardon, I shouldn't have used that metaphor there, to flip the switch to get it going. We need to get it done for the sake of the safety of the children. And I know, I'm biased, I have two grandchildren there. It would be a mass, mass confusion if anything happened out there. I'd hate to even think about it. But I think one of the things, I know the ideal situation, talking to Sam, there's a developer that wants to present a plan, we thought we would, the county would have it by now, for a long friendship way, but it's still not, and anything's happened. In fact, I know the son of the developer, the owner, but he's in the farming end of their business, not the development end of it. He says, all I can tell you is we're not going to the other side of 299, probably from somewhere from three to five years. I didn't see anything except good. And he doesn't, I'm sure his brother and his dad say, keep him out of it, we'll tell you when we're ready. But I think it would be helpful, from our standpoint, from the county's standpoint, if we've done our engineering, everything that we need to do, when Paul, I think, has talked with the folks at the Baptist home, still Baptist home with me, here's what we plan, here's what we need, here's where we need to go. And the risk we run in not doing that is suppose there's some change in management, change in the board members, then you've got to start over with a new group of people who I think now are really favorable to work with the county to get this done. So from that, I don't think we have a choice. Please go ahead, I respectfully ask you to kick it in gear, let's get this thing moving. Yes, it'd be preferable if they would come first, but I don't think the county gives up anything by us showing them what we would like to do before they come with their plan, because we still have the final say. I'm sure they want to make some density changes, this, 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 and you still have the power to get that done. I would respectfully ask that we get it going sooner than later, because it's a slow process. And as far as the budget is concerned, I've never seen such an influence. The federal government usually does a few things that don't filter down to you until some point, but they all filter down to you. Now, look at, we'll be at $5 a gallon of gasoline, I predict by Memorial Day. And if you happen to like potato bread, that's already nearly $5 a loaf of bread. But anyway, I know I've gone beyond, but I know there's not a whole big crowd waiting, so I thank you for the time. And I promised you I wouldn't be back, but Nashville changed a lot of things for a lot of people. And I think the scary part is the powers-to-be will not release that manifesto, so that the public has a right to know there may be something that could help us. And there's some other things that possibly, new security or whatever at the schools could take place in the meantime. But anyway, as far as the budget, I'm always here for the fire and rescue people and law enforcement. These folks are first responders, and I think they would tell you, any of us been out there at a zoo just to go on a good day, try a panic situation. So I thank you for your work, keep up the good work, and let's get this going for the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else would like to come and speak? Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up for any comments before we take a break to go into the 7:30 session. No action tonight. We're just here to listen. Any comments?
I don't think you need to take a break, because it's going to be 7:30 in just a second. You can start this second public hearing.
Well, we're not at 7:30 yet, that's the problem. So we've got one minute. We've got one minute.
You've got less than a minute.
There it turned.
It is 7:30. I was looking at that clock up there. You're right, 7:30. So, Mr. Eggersen, I'm turning back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kim, if you could bring up the second set of slides. You'll be happy to hear that there's only two slides in this presentation, and I've really covered... And I've, I've really covered them already, but just before we open the hearing on tax rates, again, the real estate tax rates proposed are forty six cents, which is made up of thirty nine cents general fund, seven cents fire and rescue levy. Again, as an alternative to that, you might look at forty five cents, which would break down by thirty eight cents and seven cents for fire and rescue levy. That would then leave about a five hundred and sixty nine thousand dollar shortfall in your budget, less, less than a full penny. And that could certainly be made up by projecting of revenue from either the meals tax or the meals tax and the interest that we're currently running ahead of schedule on. So that's just an alternative that I want the public to be aware of, because the board was conflicted about advertising forty six cents, but did so for the purposes of this hearing. And we will hash this out at our May second regular meeting and get a budget adopted with one version or the other. The property taxes, personal property taxes are nothing really to discuss here, other than to, to remind everyone it's unchanged, as I noted, from all the rates for last year. There are a number of different classifications there, but each of them remains the same as the current year.
Thank you, John. Just say one thing, and that was regarding Mr. Perryman coming up and speaking earlier, and Chief Monaco being here tonight with thirteen, I believe, of his members of Little Fork. It's great to see them here tonight. And according to Chief Monaco, they are here in support of the board and the assistance that we give them every year. I always try to relay, convey to them a message that one of the reasons that we're trying to get technology in the right areas in Culpeper is to help benefit them more, our volunteer fire and rescue stations. And I think all of us up here feel like that we need to assist y'all even more than we do with a hundred thousand dollars every year for each station. And we're working toward that goal. And that, that is a goal that we want to undertake, maybe a school or two in, in the rural areas of the county, as far as planning for that in the future, because we have young kids that are riding ninety minutes to two hours one way on the school buses. That is important to us up here, too. And a lot of the board members are concerned about rural roads and improving rural roads within the county, that is another goal. So we're planning for that, we're working toward trying to increase the revenue for Culpeper County to go in that direction in the next five years. And I'm looking forward to that. I think it's going to be a great initiative, and along with protecting the rural character of Culpeper County, I think it's going to be a good path for us. Anybody else want to comment before I open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. One, as we prepare our tax schedule for next year, I would, as one member of the board, like for us to look at having a separate data center tax rate for the personal property. We are allowed by code to do so. I don't want to see that rate go below what it is for cars, but we do need to have the flexibility to either maximize revenue or be competitive, depending upon situations. So setting a separate tax rate so that we can act would help us. So not commenting on the rate, just saying it would be very good and better for the citizens and the taxpayers for us to have that separate rate. And then the other thing is, I'm hopeful that the General Assembly will continue the car tax being a separate rate, perhaps make it permanent rather than having it two years and then become a political football and go another two years. It would be great to see that as where it's permanent. I mean, being able to tax data centers differently, but not cars differently, doesn't make a lot of sense. So if we could have that flexibility, that would be good also. And then third, looking at the projected revenues, things have changed dramatically from what I've seen in the last month. You go back to when a couple of banks went into receivership by FDIC, and the volume of traffic at local retail stores has changed considerably. And there are national figures along those lines, too. And there has been an adjustment in retail spending that has not been positive and has accelerated. I think we need to keep that in mind and prepare for it. That said, we are sufficiently conservative based upon interest rates because of the Fed raising rates and based upon the meals tax, that I am very confident that we will have more revenue than we are projecting to need for the budget even at forty five cents. So I'm hopeful that forty five cents will be the highest real estate tax rate in aggregate between fire and rescue and real estate that we pass. Thank you, sir.
I do have a comment. With the upcoming schools that could possibly need built and the roads, I mean, to keep this community, a community that we all want to live in, we have to be safe, we have to have good roads, and we have to have good schools. And I would hate to see what happened in FY thirteen with that tax increase for the Culpeper County High School renovation debt payment happen again if we have to renovate or build a new middle school at Culpeper County Middle School or a new elementary school. A more gradual increase over time is better for setting aside for either future debt or to take on those renovation debts. So at some point, you have to make the hard decisions, and I fully support the forty six cents so that we don't have any risk of going into the red. Because I don't have the confidence in the meals tax with what we've heard so far.
Okay, anybody else before I open up the public hearing? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for anybody who would like to come and speak on the tax rate this time. Yes, sir.
I want you to have a public hearing, nobody show up. Moving a little slow, I had to have an epidural in my back yesterday, so anyway, much better. Francis Updike, Cedar Mountain District. I think you guys have done a great job on what's happening. I think the only bugaboo that you can't answer yet is the revenue from the meals tax. You don't know precisely what it's going to help you, you're going to need more, you're going to shortfall a little more. And I was talking to Paul about it, if it's greater than you think, then I'm sure it just goes in the general fund for whatever else comes up. But I don't have any heartburn one way or the other, I prefer forty four cents for equalization, since I served on that board twice. Try to keep things, because there's a lot of people out here working paycheck to paycheck, and as things I mentioned earlier, they're going to hit people pretty hard, gasoline and food. I just went to the Toyota dealer to get a starter from our RTV dump vehicle, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for a starter, whoa. But anyway, you know that brand, anything for the farming equipment. But I, anything you can do, I can live with the forty five cents, don't like the forty six, I can live with it, but I'm just concerned about some of the taxpayers. If you could help them out in any way, that'd be wonderful. Forty four, whatever you got to do, forty five, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Nick, and thirty-five years old. I grew up here, and I've been away for a while until I came back to take care of my grandparents. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the reflection that you guys are taking on the taxes. At thirty-five years old, my demographic, I guess, is like a midlife millennial, and most of our generation cannot acquire assets, particularly property. And coming back and taking care of my grandparents was the primary reason as to why I came back. I was just in Falk here, and then time in Centerville. But to now be invested back where I started, taking these issues a little bit more seriously and understanding what they mean, I am very grateful that you are spatially aware of the burden that we bear going into the financial crisis that we are currently like beginning. I think the biggest issue that anybody within this lifetime has not experienced is a currency crisis, which we are just now entering. So nobody's experienced that except for in the nineteen twenties, Weimar Germany, global reserve currency like the US dollar has a lifespan, and I think we're at the end of it. So we're going to see some crazy inflation, the money printing, the nine trillion dollars in the past three years has essentially made it impossible for, again, my gener, my generation to acquire these assets. So I appreciate that you guys are doing what you are obviously putting your, your money where your mouth is with the, and I'd be an advocate of the forty four just because, but to be, to not be able to survive in Falk here or Centerville is, is an actuality, and it's very real. So with that said, I appreciate again what you guys are doing, and you're making it possible for at least to get a footing on, you know, potentially acquiring assets and having something that we can establish some sort of generational wealth, because that's getting further and further out of reach, at least for my generation, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Little shot. Richard Jacobs, I recently moved back into, moved to Culpeper, living in the Reba District. I, I have worked in Culpeper for quite some time, some of you may, may know me, I worked with John, Planning District, but yeah, I guess I, right before I came here, I did find your, your public notice recently about, you know, some of the proposals that you're, that you were making for the real estate tax, lowering it down from the current rate. Seems to be a really good idea, because the, sorry, so, so the, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so I, I got the letter in the mail like everyone else did, and yeah, our, our rate did go up like twenty-five, twenty-seven percent, so that was going to be like a four hundred dollar increase, so I figured I'd show up, kind of give you kind of a real world scenario, I guess, to, to look at. But I think with the new tax rate, it looks like it, it will still go up a little bit, but definitely a much more manageable, so if it can be done in a, in a managed rate like you guys have been, have been doing, that's, that's good. And I think that's everything I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Ben Salmon, I just moved here last year, actually, I think if I read the map right, I think I'm in the Jefferson District. I just wanted to say I'm also a midlife millennial, as my preceding speaker, so adequately put it. I just wanted to voice my support also for the budget that you all have proposed and the tax rate that you've proposed, you know, moving here and having to be extremely conscientious of finances and things like that. You know, I was looking at Charles Comprehensive Plan that was issued in twenty twenty-two, as well as, you know, just kind of your recent minutes and things like that, and that played heavily in my decision to, to make the move out this way. And I'm just glad to see that the, I guess, the approach and, and the kind of philosophy you all are practicing is continuing into the future. Want to voice my support for that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Last chance. Okay, go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up for comments before we adjourn.
Just I'm grateful to see members of the community that are a generation younger than mine show up and speak. That vested interest is valuable, and I'm glad they're here.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, one, I'd like to add what you said earlier when it comes to a volunteer fire and rescue, that we greatly, greatly appreciate not just what you do on a daily basis for protecting the citizens of Culpeper, but your volunteerism is the reason, is one of the main reasons that we can be considered the lowest real estate tax in the region. And to say that we're here to help you with whatever needs, as Mr. Perryman had indicated earlier, you know, you, you've been giving us full warning on that, and, and we are actively pursuing ways to, to fund that. But with that said, over the past month, since the assessments came out, I guess the number one complaint that I had heard was, you know, what is the deal with this assessment? What is causing this property to go up? Well, we have to think about for the last three years, which is the, the time span that this assessment covers, during COVID, you had so many people that were moving here to Culpeper, and they were paying more than asking price on houses. Well, when you do that, that drives the price up for everybody, and that's what we're seeing now with the assessments. But even in a normal year, without the, without the COVID sprawl, if you would, I think as a landowner in a community, if I were to pay three hundred thousand dollars for a house, and then three years later, I find out that the assessment comes back, and now my property is only worth two hundred and fifty thousand, there's got to be something wrong on why my property values have dropped. So I want to commend everyone here on the board, you know, that I work with, and we work together as a team, that I think we've done an awesome job when it comes to providing the amenities that everyone enjoys when they come to Culpeper. We have the perfect scenario, we have the downtown, the dining, the shopping, we have the rural rolling hills out in the county, the farms, and collectively as a team, I mean, I've never worked with a better bunch of people. And I think it shows when we, when we look at where we are right now with what we're, you know, getting ready to make the decision on our tax rate. But as Ms. Cagino said, there's always, there is a lot of needs coming down the pipe. And I just went to a, a meeting today, Supervisor Durham, myself, set through. Number one question, where are we going to put all these kids from these rooftops? And we're, we're on top of that, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve. So yes, the next assessment, and we just changed that from a three-year to a two-year cycle, so that's going to give a more realistic number of where we are. But believe me, there's, there's a lot of expenses that, that we need to be prepared for and stay ahead of the curve. But again, I'm grateful to work with each and every one of you guys on here, and I think we've, you know, really have taken into consideration the hardships on our citizens, and, and we're trying to relieve some of the burden when it comes to taxes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, and just for information, I think I did an analysis several weeks ago, and I used, whether we go to forty six cents or forty five cents, I think on the analysis, I used forty five cents when I did the calculation. And for anyone out there that's wondering what the implications would be, an example on a three hundred thousand dollar house would be if you're, if you're paying fifty five cents on a three hundred thousand dollar house, and then your three hundred thousand dollar house goes up twenty-seven percent to three eighty-one, the difference in the tax rate or the increase, I think I came up with sixty-four dollars a year. You would go from three eighty-one at, say, sixty-five, forty-five cents versus three hundred thousand at fifty-five cents, and I think I came up with a sixty-four dollar came up with a $64 difference per year. So for anyone out there that's wondering what the implications are, that's a good Anyone else? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.